Strategic planning. More of education and the best parameters for strategic planning in the RFP for the Ferguson School District on strategic planning. And what I would like to hear, to start with, is the board's idea of what they want in strategic planning, what they see as happening as far as the timeframe is concerned and the members that would be responsible and what we want to see in an RFP as well as strategic planning. And I've asked Chris to kind of be the point man on this project so that he seems to have a little bit more experience certainly than I do on this. And ask him to take the lead on that group project. We'll start with Mr. Eber.
Well, you mean what I'd like to see going forward. You know, I just got a...
Well, in context of the, what we want to see on the RFP, because that was the premise...
Oh, I have to pass that? I don't exactly understand the question. You mean just like...
Well, the RFP...
What you're asking personally hired?
Yes. And what we're... Chris, you want to explain it?
Wait a little.
Maybe you can explain better.
So, yeah, all right. So, basically, like any other RFP, right, it's going to outline what service we want. Do we want a Chevy truck? Or do we want a Ford? Or, and what amenities does that thing have, right? And so, like any other service, the RFP in this case will define what is we want. So, I think the quick questionnaire that was handed out at the last meeting talked about, you know, do you want, one of the questions was, do you just want a couple of high-level meetings where the board sort of gets to chime in and give some direction? Or do you want a full strategic planning process where you involve more people than just the board, do surveys, interviews, that sort of thing, right? So, I think what we need to define is, let's see, two things. One is, we'll start at the tactical level. One is, what will that process look like? So, if someone's going to come in and facilitate a process, what does that process look like, right? Do you want someone to come in and do a two-hour session for your kid's softball team? Or do you want someone to come in and do, you know, a full assessment of their skill set and then define a plan for them to win the championship in four years, right? Now, by the way I just defined that, you can tell which way I lean. I'm not hiding that, right?
You want the two hour?
No.
I didn't pick out one?
No. No, I want two hours, four days.
Oh, that's next time. Got ideas for that.
We'll include the most strategic end now. Right? Yeah. So, so...
Gotcha.
Typically, if you're looking at, you know, a strategic planning process, the way I would define a strategic plan, not an operational plan that lasts a year or 18 months, but a strategic plan, three, four years, and I think five years is folly because we all know what's gonna happen tomorrow, much less in four and a half years. But three or four years, the way I would define that is the core group, executive administration and board in particular identify some key stakeholders. For our, in our case, that would be folks from educators, right, at all different levels, a few people, it can't be, you know, 100 people because it bogs the situation down, but a few people, maybe it's eight or 10, to the point where we're at 12 or 14 total people, 15, 16, 18 at the max, somewhere in there. So, we get different viewpoints and a facilitator will set up a structure so that some of these people, all of the people, will get surveyed, right? A neutral survey from a third party that says, what do you think about this? What's important about this? Why would you do this? That's what they're serving. Then you would have either the same group, and this is something that can be decided a little bit later with the facilitator, but either that same group or a slightly smaller portion of that group get interviewed by that facilitator. So, then that facilitator, because you know you're gonna write a different answer down to a very similar question, but when I call you on the phone, now you may be able to explain yourself, or you may give a different answer. So, then that person would create a data line for us. So, they would, much in the way we had those folks do it for the vote, they would say, okay, this amount of people feel this thing is really important, and this amount of people think this thing is really important, right? And then, but in the interviews, they said some qualitative things that are also important to consider. And then this person would create that for us to understand, right? So, you've got surveys and interviews, which are done, you know, you might spend 25 minutes on the phone and 15 minutes or an hour doing a survey, right? No meetings. So, then you would come to a full day, again, this is how, is the ones that I've been involved in that have been successful. And you come to a full day session, right, where all that stuff, all that data has been mined for you by this person. They put it out and they tell you as a group, here is what you said, okay? Now, I will lead you through what that means by asking questions. And then you go through things which are classic strategic, you know, procedures like SWOT analyses and, you know, sort of strength weakness, opportunity stress, and things like that, you know, strength-based testing where you eliminate the, you know, weaknesses and threats. You just focus on what do we do well and how can we accentuate that, right? So, different facilitators, different consultants, if you will, will have different things that they're really good at, they'll focus on those, whatever. You have to, you know, help shape that to what works for your team. And then, so you spend one day and you make sure that you have deliverables from that meeting, you know, okay, we know these are the key things to focus on, these are the key areas, these are goals that we're going to focus on, here's the person who's responsible for those goals, here are the, here are the, you know, at least the first layer of activities that are gonna make those goals happen. And then, so the direction is very clear. And you've had, if you have a good facilitator, they keep you on task, on time. And then you step away, that person takes that data again and minds it and puts it into an understandable format, into a, you know, a dashboard that you can track, sends it back out for editing, you know, no, that's not what we meant, we said this and that sort of thing. The staff primarily, in my opinion, would do the, you know, kind of next layer of goals and activities to support those things, circulate that once more for final approval, you would approve that at a board meeting, obviously. And then you're off. And it includes benchmark, you know, a timeframe so when you can measure, right? And so, I think it's important to get input from teachers and bus drivers and parents and, if you can, from students. But at the same time, you need to limit that so that you can have a fairly streamlined, you know, active, sort of productive process. So, that's what I think of in terms of a strategic plan, right? And it doesn't mean that, doesn't mean updating from time to time, you know, we, whatever we talked about at school district, they update their strategic plan every month or every year, and then somebody else does it every six months, and I don't know about all that, but I think, I think three things. One, there's a lot to be said for having a neutral person do it who doesn't care who she offends or who he offends. Stop talking. We have now reached our limit to how long we're gonna talk about this. We're now moving to the next thing. And, right? And just keeping it moving because at some point you start, you know, the arguments begin to be circular. So, and then, so one is to have that neutral person. Two is to have something that is, to have something that you think about once, put information in, and somebody else like extracts the important, the salient points of that, right? And then you come back again in an interview and you do it again. And then you come during, you know, a six or seven or five or eight hour session all day long, and you do it again. And so, in touching on those things three or four, and then you do the edit. So, in three or four times, the, you know, the cream kind of rises to the top. The really important points, you can build consensus around and you have different opportunities to express what it is you really mean, in different ways, different methods to do it. So, throughout that process, you can find what's really important to everyone, right? And then, and then lastly, having the deliverable of a time-bound plan, okay, here's what we're gonna do, so we're gonna do the foundation, right? We're starting education foundation, here are the steps that we need, if indeed that's one of the key things, here are the steps that we need to achieve to do that, and here's the time that we're gonna do it in, right? And then it's, there's no question as to whether we're being successful or not because it's not personal, it's not interpretation, it's, we said we were gonna do this by then, and I was gonna sit on a committee meeting that made sure, you know, our committee that made sure it happened, and it didn't, so it's my, I failed. And here's the, here's how we're gonna fix it, right? Or, yes, we got it done, hopefully, and here's the next step. So, it just, it becomes much more clinical and less interpretive. And so, that's my sense of, of, and there's, I think, you know, plenty of people that can do that, so.
So, in a strategic plan, RFP, we're looking for a timeframe, you want this to last a month, or you want it to last three months, or whatever it is. What kind of meetings do we want? Do we want to meet weekly, or monthly, or bi-monthly?
Yeah, I would say...
Size of the group that we wanna have?
Yeah, I would say...
So that the facilitator can understand that he's working with 10 people or he's working with 25 people.
Yeah, I mean, in my sense, I would say that you would, let me address this in part and parts. So, I would say, in my opinion, in terms of meetings, just what I outlined, if you do, if you do surveys, if you do phone interviews or physical interviews, you know, depending on what the person's sort of preferences, I guess, do interviews and surveys, wrong word, surveys, interviews, I would do first, but whatever. See, because the surveys feed the interviews. What you learn in the surveys helps, if you're doing it right, helps you draft the questions. So, you do surveys, you do interviews, and if that, if that content, if that information is mined in the right way, you need, you really need one or two meetings. You really need one large planning session, and then that facilitator may need, you know, a meeting with just the board, and they may need a meeting with just Dr. McCoy, you know, or just Dr. McCoy and a couple people, so they can speak, you know, at the level that they're able to talk about the stuff, you know? So, I would think a couple, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't, beyond saying, I would give maybe a range, you know, you would say surveys, interviews, strategic, large strategic planning session, you know, all-day session, and then leave it open for one or two other meetings. But most of those meetings can be accomplished in the interviews, you know, I mean, because you're, he's gonna talk with her, you know, or she's gonna sit down with you, you know what I'm saying? So, and, or whether it's overfounded or whatever. So, I, yeah, I wouldn't wanna pigeonhole the person, she might say, we want four meetings. Well, again, I'll just take it back to softball. I mean, you tell someone, you know, is the goal to, do you want to define how much you're gonna do or what you're gonna accomplish? So, you know, so you don't, teach my kid to hit a curveball, right? So, that may take two sessions or it may take 20, you know, so, but, you know, so I think you need to leave that a little bit open.
Can I add something, Chris?
Please.
The strategic plans that I've been involved in, before they started the interview and the survey and the interview, like you were talking about, they sat down with the leadership or the board just to hear what they had to say first.
Yeah.
And then they did the interviews and the surveys, and then they, when they brought the results, they brought them back to the group.
Yeah.
And then, then from there, we went out into bringing in other community, or you can bring in the other community before, but...
Yeah.
And then again, the whole community heard when you, after they were surveyed and interviewed, heard what was said, and then it broke out.
Yeah.
But it takes a long process.
Yeah, yeah.
There's nothing that you can do in a year or, you know, it's a process.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say you can't do it in a year. I mean, you can do a strategic plan in a month if people have the time to do what needs to be accomplished. I would say that, in our case, I mean, I would, you could accomplish this in three months if you do it, right? And if you have someone who's...
Involving a community in every, everything in every month?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, because you're, I mean, I don't think you can involve 500 people from the community.
No.
You know, or maybe not even 50. But, and maybe you can, but that, that's, that would be, obviously that would add some time.
I would be 10 or 20, yeah.
And it would add some money, you know? But, yeah, but, yeah, if you're gonna do 10 or a dozen people to interview or survey them at the very least, yeah, I think you could do that. But, yeah. So, that, I mean, that's, that's what I've been talking about the past little bit. So, so, I mean, and I think, you know, I think it would allow us to really understand every day, like what we're working towards, you know? I mean, and just because you do, there's plenty, I mean, you know, plenty of strategic plans get written and then go on a shelf.
Right.
So, if you don't check in on it at every board meeting, then don't do it. It's worthless.
And I think that's really the question, number one, is really the question, why do we want to do this? What are we trying to accomplish? Because as a board, I don't think we've sat down and said, no, strategic plan is what we really need. I know I brought the five-year plan that I got from another district, Chris has talked about strategic plan, but I don't know, the seven of us have sat down and said, you know, we really want to do this because we feel we need, the, why do we want to do it? I know what's involved with strategic planning, but what are we trying to accomplish? What are we trying to come up with out of this?
Well, I would say, I would say...
That's where Scott was saying, I'm not sure what we want to accomplish, if I can guess.
No, I didn't understand the process.
Oh, okay.
I would say, I would say...
I didn't exactly understand what, what kind of, I'm getting a sense that it's what, where we see the district, a year, two years, three years, okay? And I guess I was looking for the explanation of what process takes us to that end.
Yeah.
And that's where, kind of, the explanation, and I didn't understand, like, do they want my laundry list now, or it would apparently come during the surveys and interviews?
Yeah, that's part of why you hire someone to do it.
That's what I...
I would say two things. Well, one is, I don't think you answer where you want the district to be before the strategic planning process. I think you answer that during the strategic planning process if it's done well. And secondly, I would, I would offer that, indeed, we did say that we want this because I actually made a motion, somebody seconded it, and we voted on it like three months ago, that we would do a strategic planning process. And so, then these guys started with the RFP and here we are now. So, you know...
I think the last time the district did one was in the late 80s, and that's when they closed, closed Smith, closed Graham School, and closed Carolina Point, yeah, closed some schools, and so it's been quite a while. And then there was no, not knocking who was on that strategic plan, but there was no future thinking past those two or three years because, and we needed the schools again. So, we need to, you know, it's a breathing document that goes, you just renew it and you keep going through it.
Yeah, yeah. And it's not at all going to be perfect when drafted, but it allows you to track what you're doing and everyone who works for or in the district can understand what part of that plan their job supports. And they can know, once again, you know, that we're gonna do this big thing and I have a little part of that. And if I accomplish my little thing, and if I accomplish my little part, then we can achieve the big thing together, right? And so, that's, I think it, when, again, when done right, when the plan is good and then you have those check-ins, monthly, quarterly, semi-annually, annually, so on, then it gives, I don't feel like it's confining, I feel it's actually the complete opposite when it's done right. Because I, this is where, this is where I live, this is where I work, I own everything here and that's my goal, go. You know, and I can, I can work really hard and within that framework, and I know what, you know, I know what we're all moving toward.
So, the key to this is the facilitator's able to draw out of us.
I think that's a big key of it. And the other key is everybody answering honestly.
I understand that, yeah, that there's, you have to come up with really realistic goals that are measurable.
Yeah. I, well, I, while I would, and this is my own style, I don't think you have to come up with realistic goals. I, in my opinion, now, that depends, and every group is a little different. And I understand what you're saying, right? Like, goals have to be, you know, specific and measurable, attainable. I think attainable can be lofty. I think in the, and, you know, United Way refers to them as aspirational goals, right? And they say that they're goals that you'll never actually fully achieve, but you should strive toward them. I would disagree with realistic and never achieve. I feel like you should, there are some goals that you have to say, every kid will graduate, and we will rest when that is a fact, right? But we won't admit that we're never going to achieve it, and we're going to put a plan in place to achieve it. So, it's like anything else, if you're reaching for 100%, maybe you'll get to 99, but if you're reaching for 98, you think you're gonna get to 99? Probably not.
Okay, your point's well taken.
So, and that, so that's my, that's my...
Well, I specifically like your point, because I come from a large corporation, on the knowing what your piece of the puzzle is because I hear echoed daily the words, I don't even know why we do this. You know, maybe it was something somebody put in place 15 years ago, and it's never really made its way back to the guy in command, and he would probably say, why are you doing that? But that's what we, you know, nobody, a lot of people put these policies in place but never, did you ever notice they never like send a letter out, oh, we're not doing that anymore? You know, you know what I'm saying?
Well, the guy who put it in place is gone.
And he's, he's gone and retired. I don't know if I'm making it what I'm trying to say here, but, and I, you know...
Yeah, and I, and I think...
And I really like that piece of it, which are even a reference point that you could go back to and see what my part of this is.
And again, it comes into finding, I think, really big things that you're going to accomplish and then breaking that down into realistic, attainable pieces. So, for instance, I mean, I know, I would think that Dr. McCoy would love to have a district, to run a district that is certified by the Council on Creditation and Baldrich, right? Like, who wouldn't, who wouldn't be excited about that, right? To be among the elite in terms of processes. It doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean that every kid graduates, but it means that when things go wrong, you have a process to always fix them, right? Constant improvement. So, those are the kinds of things that can be decided in a strategic plan. When you say Baldrich, that means a million things that you have to do, right, over the next five years. So, and you, and indeed realistically, you may never attain it, right? And people are swerving and, you know, or shaking their heads, whatever. Well, they're all nodding right now. But anyway, and so I'm not saying that that's what we choose, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but those types of things can be decided in that, in that process so that you can make a lot of decisions that feed that. So, every day, somebody can say, oop, I'm about to do something, I'm gonna send an email, I'm gonna write a letter, I'm gonna talk to a student, does it feed my goals? Is it really what matters? Is it, does it matter what the goals, the big goals that the board set and the goals that Dr. McCoy and the administration, you know, built underneath that, those supporting activities, and the ones that I worked for myself that I said will support those, and they agreed upon, and the board signed off on, and everybody's on board, but does that feed that, or should I just not do that thing?
Right.
You know? And that's, those types of, you know, sort of that start-stop continuing type exercises, right? So, you know what, there's something we should start doing, we're not doing it, and we should do it. There's something we should stop because 15 years ago, something I said, let's do it, and nobody within your shot can tell me why we need to do it. And continue, there's stuff that we do that's spot-on, or stuff that we do that could just use a little tweak that we need to continue to do. So, you know, all of those different types of exercises, you know, are included in that. I just think it's empowering to staff, and I think it's really organizing for boards to be able to look and say, all right, let's go down this dashboard, there's six things that you said in it, and under the six, there's a bunch, right? But there's six, or nine, or four, I don't know, but...
So, what do we use here?
But I really haven't given them much thought.
What do we use here?
Larry?
I mean, you put together a skeleton, so why don't you put some, where do we go? How do you establish this?
We got what we need to go if that's what the endorsement is, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I mean...
For me, what I heard was a three-month process for a three-year goal that has up to 18 people that is over. The only thing I would differ is instead of a six-hour work period of working on this class, I would maybe say three hours for multiple times, but that's the thing that...
I don't think three months is enough.
That's, that's what I wanted to interject also.
Go for it.
All right, so is, is three months a realistic amount of time? Do you think we need, I mean, for our discussion, do we need a little more time?
Well, I think, here's what I would suggest for the RFP. I would say, I would say you put down, yeah, a two-to-six-month process, you know, and then let that person help guide us. You need some, you need some leeway. Frankly, I think it fizzles out. If you take more than four months, I think people lose it. I can't remember what I said, what survey? And you want me to remember what I said on it? No, since then, my kid got braces and...
Yeah, but then you need to come back to us...
Moving forward.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking you need a balance.
But I've done the strategic plans, we have a book, and we come back and we talk about each section that, like, we go, we talk about the questions and the surveys with our clients. So, I've been on the end of the consultant part.
Yeah.
And we talk with them of what we've done, and it takes a lot more than three months.
Yeah, so I've been, I mean, and I'm speaking only from my personal experience, the most successful... The most successful ones that I've been part of, and I mean successful after looking, have they accomplished these goals, didn't take any longer than six months. And maybe that, maybe that's, maybe that's correlation and not causation, right? But, but to me, I don't think you need any more time than six months. Three to six months, in my opinion, is more than sufficient.
The RFPs for the facilitator, they put all the data together. Do they stick with you through time or how does it?
Yeah, so, I mean, I would think that you, in the RFP, you would.
How does that kind of go?
So they would.
You've got your plan, then they start implementing. Do they come back and do the checks and balances kind of thing?
I would think that you would want to have them explain in the RFP, what will their ongoing support look like?
Okay, that's good.
So I think you ask that in an open-ended fashion.
Right.
So they don't, because what would happen is if I said to you, "Scott, I'm gonna give you a thousand dollars if you're gonna do the thing you normally do, and will you also do this?" And you're gonna say, "Oh, yeah, yeah." And what I asked was, "Will you be a circus clown," you know, "at Rob's kid's birthday party?" You're, you're like, "Uh, yeah, I need a thousand bucks, sure."
For a thousand dollars, yeah.
But guess what? You've never been a circus clown and you're not gonna be very good at it.
Yeah, you're right.
Right? And maybe, I think you would.
I do too.
But, um, but, but.
I love kids.
You never say you can make fluffy shit.
But you're gonna say, so I would ask them in an open-ended fashion.
Right.
So they can say, "Oh, well, here's what I typically do."
Right, okay.
You know, "I'm available for calls for a year. I'm available for one meeting, one follow-up meeting with the board and the superintendent or whatever and, and, you know, in six months as a check-in or whatever." So they do what they normally do.
Be fair, we see ourselves, how we see us, how the people see us, how we really are. And I like that, that neutral party coming back for that process, you know? Because we may think, "We really did good." Well, you're doing good, but you really.
Well, yeah.
You know, I had to hear.
Part of that is making sure that those goals are numeric in some fashion.
Okay.
So it, again, it becomes less interpretive and, "Look, we said eight of whatever and we only have seven."
Gotcha. I like that a lot.
You have a facilitator, you have a facilitator in mind, so to speak.
Well, this is where I'll probably have to not vote on this, right? Because, because I'm sure that some of these people who will, who will give, who will submit to the RFP, I'll know.
Yeah, well, okay, maybe you can't vote, but you certainly can give some type of discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. I, I, well, I mean, I have to look and see what's appropriate, but, I mean, I think.
My only question on the time.
Depending on who submits.
On the time thing, is that I know that it'll probably happen naturally, but knowing the pressures that our staff is under during this next six weeks, asking them to do a lot of other work besides what they're doing during school starts is gonna be asking a lot.
Yeah, but I think if we're thinking the way we're going, they'll probably gear up after that anyway. Yeah, and when I say it could be done in three months, it's from the time you start, you know, not from now, right? So you may not start until two months.
I'm thinking we probably won't get started till after the first of the year because by the time we send this out, it's September, October.
Well, I mean, if they would really get this back to the September meeting or something.
Yeah, I would, well, you, you can't, yeah.
That's awfully fast.
I, I would caution against overlapping an election. Because if someone, if you start on.
Yeah, I would think it needs to be done January, February is the latest. This one needs to be finished. I would, I would vote January and February.
Again, I think that can be put in the RFP. How long, you know, our thought is this, how long would you take? And what would happen in that timeframe? If you did it in three months, six months, nine months, what would happen in that timeframe? How soon can you start? I mean, I think those are all things that can be asked in a timeframe. I mean, how soon can you start if you hire Fry Cook? You ask that question, so.
See, I, I think that the board could come to a conclusion about that, but I'm curious about, you know, there's other people involved in it. Dr. McCoy, how do you feel about?
Oh, I wanted to defer that question to my team because I talk too much and I haven't asked them that question. But I got short answers.
They also can interject what they think.
I've done it a lot of ways too. The model you described was the magic cost model. It worked very well. It's efficient. It can be done in a month or two. And it's mostly senior level people, but few outside people. That, that's really smooth with measurables and things that you look at. Then I did the CSD way, which was about the six-month period. And you're right, people started to get, they lose their momentum wanting to do it. And when the product was done, it was not the stretch gold vision. It was more so granular. You know, Smarco's didn't like that a lot. It made me feel like a waste of time. It didn't take us further. It wasn't anything new or better. So, I mean, I, I'm totally on board with everything you just described there. And here's the deal, and I do think that outside person adds and brings a lot of value and I think they're clear measurables for the board to be able to point back to and say, "Everything that the thirty, sixty, ninety-day plan, the strategic plan allows to totally back us to the, to the district's business." That's, that's nice. And that happens back now and that's, that's beautiful. So, so, I mean, that's my two cents. I, I can say some of the comments that some of my staff have made, but at the same time, they're all on board.
Yeah, well.
The kind that they can say, and I don't know if they would tell you if they were, but the point is that they're very capable of telling the people, and each of them in their own respective, facilitated a educational version of the process. Um, Amy might be one of the people that has done it non-educationally maybe, but she's done it certainly educationally. I can tell you the non-educational version is pretty cool and probably was needed more than the usual education version. I looked at the one that Leslie referred to, Unicom did, and it was this thing on a shelf somewhere and the community at that time was mad because nothing really happened other than the school closing, like Leslie said, "I'm being filled." Because they put a lot of time in, overtime, and there was nothing new in that. So that's why I'm for the non-educational, like what you're describing, because we wouldn't do that.
Yeah, and I think, I think you, you like that. You used a good phrase, you know, that's moving at the speed of the knee. And I think, you know, when, when a business does a strategic planning process, they don't have a year to spend on it. Because in a year, you may go under. So you've gotta get it done and move. And if it needs to, if you need to change something a little bit here, six months down the road, then you build that into the process. You know, you know what? We're not sure on this. We're gonna, in six months, we're gonna do a check-in and we're gonna re-vote or whatever, right? And.
Chris, I don't think we're any different though. I really think that if the business model, business model, model would be infused into a school district, school districts would be operating a little bit differently. And that's why it, we need to move fast. It needs to be focused. It needs to be changed up every month. And you need to have your pulse on every single thing that is happening. And just because we adopted this textbook doesn't mean that it's gonna be the end-all, be-all. You know, you have to assess it and if it's not working, you gotta change it.
Yeah, you need to change.
And our accreditation, because we are evaluated on a yearly basis, the target is moving. And maybe we're not pulling in a profit, but we're pulling in standards. If we pull in standards, we're accredited. If we're accredited, people wanna come. And if people don't wanna come, we're not going to exist or get support.
Completely agree.
You know, so.
One hundred percent.
So, yes, I have been a part of, more with school model. It's long, lengthy, not very useful. And I think right now, we have some things in place. We all just need to speak one language. It can't be strategic focus area. It can't be thirty, sixty, ninety-day plan. It can't be four goals. It can't be CSIP. It can't be what, we just all have to talk the same language. You have to mean the same thing.
Yeah.
I want to talk about change. Think a year ago.
Right, exactly.
Not just sort of fantasize we're doing what we're doing now.
Right.
Well, absolutely. And you talk, and you talk about speed. I mean, DESI has no, you know, governance by its very nature. And in, and for many reasons, it's good, but it's slow, you know? It's a meeting and you gotta have four people and they can't look at each other outside of that room ever. And, you know, and so you've got all this, so it's slow and so, but DESI isn't slow. And the decision is made, right? And boom, here it comes, right? And that's okay. That's the way it goes. So we'll be able to react just as quickly. I think we need to move that quickly.
And there are a lot of times where we can't move because we don't see the board except for once a month. And so that, that's a re, I, no. I mean, that's the reason I said I need a special board meeting so I can hire some teachers.
Yeah, yeah.
And if we wait, then it can wait.
And maybe it's not hire teachers, but if you have this plan.
It could be anything.
There could be certain things.
Right.
That it's already designed for the staff to do, you know, in our, so.
Yeah, there has to be a mechanism in place that's gonna trigger an action because of something.
Right.
Yeah.
I would hope that we'd focus us seven, so we're all going in the same direction too.
Right.
I think that would be really, really.
And I, I just know that for me, and again, I'm speaking only, if I came and there was, there's a lot of great stuff that we need to, to hear, see, understand, and I learn every week, month. But in addition to that, I think it would also be true if we had this one sheet of paper, one whatever, and we said, "Here's where we're going. Here's where we are." "Here's where we're going. Here's where we are." And here's, here are the supporting activities that are happening and here are our failures. And talking about failures isn't a bad thing. It's part of getting better, you know, so.
You'll have to sort of, time it out, where it's not available.
Let me confirm, so the, the.
Do we have enough?
The who, the what, the, because, yeah, you mentioned that very well there and then follow-up closure. Uh, the, the only thing I need is, uh, is we have to wide and it's for three years.
When?
Feeling the, the, and then so the how long? Um, I'm hearing the two to six months for the purpose of RFP. It could be the two, it could be six, but just in that timeframe.
Well, I'm looking at just dates right now, but if nine eleven, which is our next board meeting, let's hope it doesn't. But nine eleven is the next board meeting. I'd like to approve the RFP at that point.
That's right. We'll be ready for that.
And then I'd like to set an end date of, of January the eighth, which is the fourth of January to approve the strategic plan. So that gives you the time period in there to get it done.
I'm sorry.
January eighth, the end date, and the RFP, the approval of the contract.
Definitely.
So selection.
That keeps us out of the electoral.
Select in September, select the person in September.
And that selection will be presentation at the board meeting or what?
At board meetings. I mean, we have to approve an RFP to.
But do, do we want these folks to do a presentation? Is that what you're asking? Yes?
What is, what is, what will, what will the product be that they're, is it, is it written?
From which product that you will review or do you want them to come to speak?
I would, we could have a, a special meeting just to have, like you did with the lawyers, have a present and, and.
I, I mean, it is a, it's sort of an interpersonal relationship here, that doesn't hurt.
What do you mean to present? You mean to present the finished project or who we're gonna hire?
No, present what they'll do as a, as a proposal.
Right. But do we have a, a special session so we can vote on it? Or we could do it as a study session and then vote at the, we could do that. Do that, that would be.
You're gonna do it for you?
No, it's all. No, no, that's the next agenda. That's right.
You're right. Thank you, sir.
I don't, I really hate to pinpoint that, that it will be done by January. And here's my reasoning, because December is a crazy month. That gives them up. We, even if we do approve it in September, which doesn't sound like we'll be able to, you know, we won't have had, chosen who we want, that gives them October and November. And with schedules, we have a hard enough time. I really don't, I hear the, the election cycle, but I'd like to put it off, you know, and get it done in January. That's great.
Set a ten, a ten and ten.
I would just say, yeah, I mean, I think if we put that as a, as a, just, you know, an ideal goal, but then give them a range, you know, and I think that's, I think that's.
February the eighth.
Fine, it's fine.
Well, this, this board stays the same through March.
February twelfth is the board meeting.
Yeah.
But this board stays the same through March.
Potentially.
There'll be no changes on this board until April. Technically, we could wait until March to make the decision. I mean, to see the final product.
Yeah.
Will still be the same board.
Right.
It might still be the same board after the elections.
Yeah, I, I would, here, here's my thing, you know? The house is on fire. The fire truck pulls up. They don't wait to turn on the hose, right? Like, so when you have something to do, just do it. Like, why wait? So, and, and no, that doesn't mean you rush it, right? It's what John Wooden said, "Be quick, but don't hurry." So you do it as fast as you can, well.
I'm in agreement. I just know how we are about dates. We have trouble, "How long did it take us to do Dr. McCoy's evaluation?" I, last spring. I mean, we kept putting it off and putting it off for months. I think that if we tell them the drop dead date is in February.
I agree with you. I don't think we should tell them a, a drop dead date. I think we should say, "Here's, this is a desired goal. Give us what you think is realistic," you know? And I think they can.
I think that's very doable. Because, you know, even people.
It's like goals for the students, we're like.
Well, those dates might be dictated by the, the facilitator and the speed that he needs to move at or she needs to move at. And when they give their presentation, they could say, "Okay, we're gonna do it da-da-da-da and we'll be done on January the eighth." Another one might say, "We're gonna do this, this, this. It'll be done by February twelfth." And, and we select whichever one that, that we are most comfortable with.
September eleventh is not, that's what I thought, you said we were gonna do the RFP, not selection of the company.
Well, that.
We can put out the RFP.
No, we're gonna put the RFP out now and have it back by September eleventh so that we can make the decision.
But we're gonna interview before that, right?
Understand that Larry's already sent this out to a number, I don't know, a number of people.
I kept up with him to let him know just different stages.
Yeah, so there are a couple of people who are already interested. So it's not as if this is, we're starting from ground zero, no September eleventh.
Okay, I just thought he said we couldn't vote on doing the, that we had to vote on doing the RFP and we couldn't do it until September. I thought that's what I heard Paul say.
No, we've already voted on doing the RFP.
Right.
Okay, well, he said something like that.
This is, this is just a discussion to, to hook the RFP together in what we want in the RFP.
Larry started one and now we're just taking it, we're just kinda trying to finish the RFP.
And then vote to select the company is on September eleventh. That's what you did really correct. And now you're asking a good question of, do we meet in a study session and then select on the eleventh? Or do we, um, select on a different day, right? I think that's what you're asking, to choose the company.
My person, my personal choice would be to carry presentations and have a day, a week, whatever, a month over and then vote.
So that would what you do?
I, that's good.
I agree with Paul. And that, and that could be a pretty quick, having recently, whatever, I mean, it would just be.
Presentations.
Boom.
Uh, the Wednesday before that is, is September the fourth. I know you're gonna be out of town for September, is that correct?
Yes.
Will you be here for the presentation?
Yes.
If we had it on the fourth?
Yes.
Is the fourth doable there? So if we had the.
Most of them are just on hold pitting what decisions are. So they've been working towards this, at least getting it.
But if we had the presentations on the fourth and then the final vote on the fifth, you could at least have your input through the study session.
Vote on the fifth or eleventh?
Vote on the eleventh period on the fourth.
Right.
So that leaves five of us voting if Chris is going to abstain.
And I will be, I will not be president. That's all.
You can rock.
Well, and I just said, I mean, we need to look at what's appropriate and, and all, I mean. When this process started, just to make sure we're all the same sheet of music here, we, I was under the understanding that we may not. We, I was under the understanding, um, that we may not bid this because of, because wherever the cut line was on the P, right? And so I reached out to a number of people, some of whom responded, who were under the, uh, the dollar amount that, that I was originally, that I originally thought, I should say. Um, we, we didn't need to bid, so I was just looking who could do this, who, who I trust and who's, who will do it at a cut rate, basically. So, so there is someone who came forward who is willing to at least consider it, I guess, and that person is part of, I think, or I don't, I haven't spoken to them. So, so that is part of the mix, right? So, um, so that's part of what, so if they, if it gets to a point where some of these, I know some of these people. I, I wanna do is, I mean, here's the thing, it's catch twenty-two, right? I want to make sure that, um, that I'm doing what's, what's ethical, right? And, and, but at the same time, if I, if, if I know and fully trust someone, it's hard for me to sit here and allow someone else to be selected if I don't have any clue who that person is. And that's just from a personal standpoint, I'm just saying, if it were my business, I'm taking somebody I trust. Right? It's not mine, so, I mean, we, we just have to figure out what the best ways to do that is.
As long as we don't work for them and have any kickbacks, your expertise is toward this.
Yeah, no, obviously, that wouldn't be.
Can we move on? Can we get some?
Anything else we're gonna talk about in the RFP?
September fourth, for presentations, the date for them to have something to us so we can get copies run or whatever, well, we'll, we can have them present. Present, but some notice prior to whether it's documentation or.
Yeah, we have proposed we need some time.
So whether it's the Friday before or, you know, that Monday, I mean, what's.
Whatever.
And, and if, uh. There, you know, one guy is at ten thousand dollars and the rest of them are at four thousand dollars, then that guy ten thousand dollars is about a hundred percent.
Tell us now if you wanna put a cap on it. Do you think you get five thousand or two thousand dollars or something?
I don't wanna put a cap on it.
They'll, they'll arrange two thousand to five thousand, they'll, they'll tell their plan to that dollar amount.
Yeah, I, I would, I wouldn't, I agree with us, I would just see what. Yeah, what can they.
Okay.
Cause we may be cutting off our own nose for a couple thousand dollars. I, I'm not saying that we are or, you know, still get the cheapest one.
Well, I, I really.
And if we give a cap on the education. They're all gonna come in at forty-nine ninety-five, you know?
Yeah, exactly. Well, Larry, will you, if it's the board, would, if, would you draft that and then just, I can look at one more time to make sure? I don't have any other thoughts or language, but I don't, again, I don't wanna pigeonhole us, I don't wanna pigeonhole the staff, like, I want the language to be pretty broad and, and to your point, to make sure that we're not limiting ourselves from time standpoint or whatever, I don't know, so.
My question about the presentations, are we talking about twelve, fifteen people responding to this thing? You can't do twelve or fifteen presentations.
There were, were five that had contacted us before, when it was on the website, it's actual phone calls that we made in contact.
Give them, so twenty, twenty-five minutes, I mean, that would keep it, five, five of them would keep it under a couple hours.
All right. Ten minutes.
Fifteen minutes, I mean, or twenty, good writing is short writing.
I don't think ten's enough, but fifteen would.
But yeah, fifteen, so say ten to fifteen.
Say ten to fifteen, we're done in twenty.
Right, yeah, well, then whoever goes over twenty, they're fired.
Move your right along.
Yeah.
All right, so, so we, we get on the, uh, RFP. How close to that get to what we started out with?
Well, this is a lot more difficult.
Okay.
I think so. I have a better idea of what's going on from what I read the first time.
But it's literally broad because you just need.
Right, yeah, that's, that was my sense. Good, let's quickly move to the next subject.
Board meetings. There was a, quite a bit of discussion about the, the, the last board meeting and the length of it and, and the desire to, to try and shorten the meeting so that we're not all brain dead by the end of it and that's, that's, uh, as often happens, we end up with a, a closed session at the end at eleven o'clock and and, you know, in, in some cases, we might be deciding somebody's fate, it, it, it's not really the best, uh, service to that person or to the board or to the district that, that we do that, and so, uh, would like to have some discussion on, on how we can, uh, shorten, shorten meetings up. One suggestion was that perhaps Dr. McCoy and I look at the, the bids being done and perhaps place more on consent agenda so that, and just speeds that whole process along, but I don't wanna take any, anybody's voice away at the same time if you got a concern about those.
Well, I'll say right now, if it's, if it's a, if it's a bond expense, I would say put it on the consent agenda.
I agree.
And, and if someone sees, wait a minute, I wanna talk about this for a second for a valid reason, we can always move to really consent agenda at that moment. But that means four things stay on and one comes off or whatever, so I think that's one.
But that's all, you know, one, uh, cause we do approve, what we did in May, the bond issue expenditures going forward. And so as long as it falls within that parameter, that would, that would have shortened about seven items last time. So, uh, that would have spent.
I'll, I. Joe, please.
Go.
I don't think we need to be read to. That drives me nuts and it has, I mean, it's wonderful that we have a synopsis and I think that it should be highlighted X, Y, and Z out of there that we need to know about what we've all read and a lot of times.
Read as well.
And a lot of times, we can just say, and I have said, I move, we do so-and-so or we accept such and such a report. Now, if there's things that need to be added to that paragraph or a quick summary of the paragraph, but to read word for word for word to us, I don't think that's needed and I think that takes a lot of time. And I'm not saying that to hurt anybody's feelings, I'm just saying let's, and I don't think we need comments, uh, from. You know, we've already, it's read to us, Dr. McCoy, so I don't think you need to then re-comment on what has been said. Let them tell us and then we can discuss it or whatever, I think that, there's just too much of, of comment.
Does the public get a copy of the board agenda when they come in, there's piles of them? Cause that was, a lot of the information we talked about before, that sometimes I will vote questions, not for my benefit, cause I might have already had a conversation with you, but for the public who may not know what we've already talked about, and that was always a complaint I received that we just sit up here, we vote yes or no. Um, yes, and they're really don't know what's going on, they're not part of that conversation, so I just wanted to make sure that we're looking at it from their perspective as well.
Well, it's in every public, I think it's usually to try to answer some person's question from either here without identifying that person or out there. Like, last year, I would say, and that's being paid out of title fund, because we go, but because, and I wanna do a case, we're not sending it anywhere from Calisid every time. Uh, just to liberate.
Yeah, I think those.
I think, I think the point was well taken, but whoever's making the presentation, they would ask, did what's important? And you don't have to read the whole thing to us, I think that's right, and particularly if there's something that's not written there, that tends to be, uh, something to be pointed out. I think that's very.
And many of them are doing presentations anyway, so if they're doing some sort of presentation, there's no.
Right.
No need to read the paragraph and then do the presentation.
Right.
You know, they can get in and say, we'd like your approval and, and go on from there.
So I'm agreeing with that the bond, do we need to vote on any of this?
Can't vote on it, it's a study session. Just give a direction.
My only question on, on the bond stuff is, are we in agreement that if they tell us that this is under budget, that we agree that it's under budget?
What, what happened?
Well, because when we talked about things like whatever was the dump truck or whatever, that, that kind of was, well, this is under budget, this is budgeted and this amount is under the budget. Do we agree with that? Because you're basically accepting that if we put it on the consent agenda.
But they can say that it's.
But it doesn't mean that, doesn't mean that you don't have to have the documentation.
No, no, but I agree, but I'm just saying from our point of view, I'm asking us, the seven of us, if we agree with that, because that has come up on several occasions where this is budgeted and this is under budget and we spend twenty or thirty minutes discussing.
That was one of the things that was asked for again last Wednesday, was to say, okay, there's fifty thousand dollars in this budget, we're gonna spend thirty thousand of it, so it leaves us with ten thousand of it. And as a, as just a.
Right, and I don't know how difficult that is to produce, if you looked at the document that I referred to, that we did every month of what percentage of the budget has been spent of the number of budget items that are on there, I guess we can computerize that and spit it out.
I did make up like a summary sheet, I.
Okay, and I, you know, that would be helpful, but most of us, I agree with, with Chris on that, you look at that whole list of budget items, everyone don't know what goes in every item.
There's. Things, things like the dump truck, that's under the plant, the plant has a budget of, of X number of dollars for vehicles and, and if as long as that fits within that, it's not going in brackets and red and at the end of it, then. You know, I had a budget, you had a budget, and we had to stay within that budget.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's right.
And I think for most of.
Then we're just allowed to do whatever we want, so I can't even say, we just add the percentage.
Right.
It's out of the.
It's out of this budget, you know?
Your, your point is if the board is all recruited and it's out of the, that it will be, will shoot the.
We'll be okay with that.
And I appreciate that question because it's a, it's something that just.
If it's in black and white, then like we've asked for, then I think, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
One thing to say with, what Rob said, I think if, let's just say I have a question on Medicaid, cause we were talking about that a while ago, and it's on the agenda. So I would call either Dr. McCoy or Larry or the person presenting and ask my Medicaid question and then at, and I would get the information and then it should be emailed out to everybody else. Then at the meeting, I can say, we found blah, 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 blah out, but we don't have to, you know, sit and ask questions and I always feel sorry for the cabinet, cause a lot of times we put them on the hot seat, and I think we need, as far as asking questions, I think we need to ask our questions ahead of time, have the answers and be prepared to, to.
I, I would disagree to some extent because what happens is, when, when I was sitting out there with the old boards, is it looks like.
But I'm saying you can say, I, I asked about this.
But you never do, I mean, generally, not you, I'm saying, you, you, when you sit out there, you'll say, um, we need a dump truck for so-and-so, all in favor, I, I, oh, I, 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 I. And they don't, the public doesn't realize that you've asked these questions and, and that's where.
But if you had.
It's a balance of, it's a balance of where, you know, a lot of times I don't really wanna get too deep with the, with the, uh, the board packet because I wanna ask them at the board meeting, you know? So I understand what you're saying, that, that boy, there's a fine line there because if you're sitting out there and you have nothing, but.
But it's not like you just.
I, 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 they don't know that there's been discussions in, in emails behind.
Well, I, I can paraphrase what Leslie's saying, if we ask the question beforehand, we still ask the question at the board meeting.
And I'm saying, Paul, maybe you do, okay? And no disrespect to men, but I'm not personally, this mean, I'm not sure that you always do. Because you've already gotten that answer, and I realized that when I got on the board, when I was sitting out here, I had no clue that you guys had already probably asked a lot of questions that are going in my head out there. Well, now that I'm in this seat, I realized you probably did ask all those good questions. And that's kinda what I'm, I'm saying, it's really the fine balance of.
But that's why I'm saying we should reject, re. Thank you, repeat, thank you, I just don't like to repeat. Repeat questions. That's what I was, I, I don't know what I was saying, I wanna go home.
And I agree, but I, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure that you always.
I, I think, yeah, exactly. So, so I think it's, I think you're, you're right, it's about balance, I think that, um, that it's, you know, you. There's always that person who asks a question that really is only from their knowledge, and so I think we just simply focus on questions that actually raise the level of the conversation and it's for everybody's benefit and, yes, ma'am.
I'm not speaking for the cabinet, I'm speaking for me, I always wanna be able to answer your questions, and so if I ever have to say, I don't know, or I will have to get back to you, I don't like to say that to the board, I wanna, I want to be responsive, and an example, Mr. Martinez, when I was presenting for some finance information, it was about student accident insurance, and you said, well, what were the rates last year? And, you know, I'm thinking in my head, I don't know, I wasn't doing the CFO job, I'm just delivering this to you, but I could have easily gotten that for you prior to. And so that's where I appreciate everything that you do and I appreciate your questions and I wanna be responsive and it wouldn't matter if you asked, if you emailed Dr. McCoy and said, hey, I'm gonna ask a question about this, just so we can be prepared and maybe gather some additional information that you're curious about. It, it doesn't matter, we can, we want to be responsive to you, we wanna be knowledgeable, we want, we'll wanna give you everything you need so you can make an educated decision on your vote.
I'll say one thing, that I don't think this board is shy about asking questions.
No, but we, but we wanna, I can't, I can't pull my computer up when I'm scanning.
I'll always, I'll always say this, I will try, with, it's, it's also true that there are times that we have a board meeting that starts at six and so I spend four to five looking at the thing. Right, that's just the way it is, and so, so I can try to do that, I can't promise that I'm always.
Can I ask you for a motion?
No, we have four minutes.
No, we're gonna adjourn, I'm gonna adjourn.
We have four minutes.
No, 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 this is.
Am I on the cell phone?
I'm sure. I've got a couple of them.
Well, it's ten fifty-six, we have four minutes, all right?
Okay, well, I.
Last point?
Well, well, a couple of points, one with, uh, the, you know, I got home and felt a little dirty about the late night session only because I started thinking not about that individual case, but about, we're sitting there at midnight, like he said, maybe twelve-thirty deciding on a person's future. And I don't know if I can really do much of that anymore, I'll be honest, I'll either just not come or, or they need to be at a better time where I can seriously look at the information you give us. Because I got home and thought, I wonder if that name on that document was mine, if I'd have felt good about how that board treated that, and that's. I look myself in, in, in the, in the mirror, so that's something.
I gotta push it that very quickly, cause I know we're a mindful time. In, in my opinion, that could, I could've, you could've woken me up at four AM and I could've made that decision about three sessions.
I'm talking about the bigger.
Well, I, and I agree with you in principle, on that particular instance, I think that.
Well, sure, I'm not talking that particular, I'm talking about that particular instance and how I felt that night, maybe think about the bigger picture.
I make on that point is we have to get through the regular meeting more quickly.
Okay, which is my point, that's why I wanna, we gotta extend this.
Maybe this is going to, maybe this is going to help us.
Yeah, let's extend. Oh, should I extend? Oh, you do extend, second.
The movement second, we extend, well?
Okay.
Well, we got a vote.
Mr. Eber.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Schroeder.
Aye.
Todd said.
Yeah.
I vote yes. Mr. Martinez, you vote, and Mr. Martin.
Yes. I want to nice this, I want to get it over to me, too.
No, I, I think, and I think that there is a point there, what do we ask about, and what is our role? And I don't know, I, I hate to keep coming back to the dump truck, but I've lost, lost some sleep thinking about this, is that we spent twenty-five minutes talking about the dump truck. And it's like, we've never seen a dump truck. We don't know how corroded it is, we know what the price is, and it makes sense, it's a twelve or thirteen-year-old truck, that sort of makes sense. So we spend all this time discussing stuff at a very, I hate to say it, low level, but I think, on some of our discussion, we're digging down in the places that is really not what the board should be worried about. Again, if our staff, if our staff tells us it's needed, because they've looked at the truck, they put up on the lift, they've seen the corrosion, and it's under budget, which they said it is, and the money's been in the account, which it is, why do we spend twenty-five minutes talking about it? I think that's, that in itself is a problem for us of trying to decide how to bid or how not to bid, when getting into the inner workings of the district. And I think that's something as a board, we have to come to some agreement.
But, but I think that was cleared up, that'll be in the consent agenda.
Yeah.
So, so that, that was cleared up. Now, just on your specific point, I, I think it mushroomed a little bit for me, was because when they said, um, it's just a safety issue, and we can't deal with it, and it's all rusted out, it's, you don't know when it's gonna die. And the next thing he says is, but we're driving it until we know when it's gonna die. You're like, well, now it's, it either is off the road, or it's not. You know, so I had a little problem with that, but, um...
And I also think that particular discussion got into a bigger, bigger issue.
I agree.
And, and the, the single bidding, I mean, single, you know, bid on, on, on an item that was...
Yeah, but let me go back to that, because that has bothered me a lot, too. Our staff went the extra mile to figure an angle to say it was three to five thousand dollars, and then we beat up on them for twenty-five minutes. And I have real problems with that.
But looking at the document that we had, we had no idea that that happened.
But in his presentation, he told us that, and we still commented on it. And I really am threatened with that, that's not the way we should treat our people.
Well, as an individual board member, I, I do not like single bids.
I agree, I agree, and I don't wanna raise the point of the beginning of the meeting.
I mean, that's where...
I don't like single bids either. Well, but in a way, I've worried about that, but in this particular case, I see how it happened, because there's gonna be darn good profit in this.
Well, but I think, I think there's...
I'm seeing people saying they don't wanna do it.
I, I, I agree with you, I agree with you that we need to keep our questions at the right level, and, and that that went into taxable, it was also helping. First board meeting after the tax increase was failure, which means, guess what? I think there's a point to be made. Folks, you don't wanna raise the taxes, great, we have to look, and I said this in some fashion, we have to look at everything, and if we're not going to, um, be able to afford it, then we just can't get it, right? And obviously, there's the bond issue, and that's different, but, but, um, but some, so people need to understand that, that there are repercussions to decisions. Some decisions are, are voting.
Bond issue isn't, isn't different, if you can make the bond issue stretched to six years instead of five years, that's a whole other story.
Well, true, yeah, it's closely related, yeah.
So, so there is, there is that point.
The other point to be made on the RFP is, we just want the discussion, it's how you write the RFP. So can the RFP, I think there was a point made, can the RFP be written more inclusively so that in some fashion, you can garner more bids? Yes, if you say we need a Ford, guess who can't bid? The Chevy guys.
Which don't pay.
Right, so, yeah, so, and I, and I, and look, well, I know about dump trucks, I learned in the last meeting, okay, so...
I, I agree with that, from my point of view, we thought about this a lot. When you think about what they did two days before the very last day to order this truck, okay? They're working an angle. They could've put out a RFP, and go by in twenty fourteen, we'll get fifteen bids, and that'll all be five thousand dollars more than we paid.
You don't know that, they do though.
Well, does that help us?
Well, no, man, you're just speculating.
All right.
But in this case, you're gonna...
We're getting way off, guys.
We're talking about trying to expedite board meetings, okay? And I've got some ideas. Number one, I think it's about time that we set some time limits down, and we step to it. Number two, when we're all speaking, we ought to remember that we can do it much quicker and much faster, and that includes the superintendent, okay? That includes all of us. And number three, circular arguments are ridiculous, and we're adults. We need to stop. Now, on the time issue, yours, on the time issue, I don't know what the rest of the board feels on this, this is just my little, in my little world. I'd love to see Art and, and the board president get together on the agenda, and assign a fictitious time to each item.
No, 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 we did that before, and that is a disaster. Because I can tell you that, as a board member, I was sitting there, okay, we've got five minutes to do, talk about X. They did it for years, and we took it off, because it drives you nuts, because you keep looking and think, oh, well, we've only got two more minutes to talk about this. So we've only got five minutes. It doesn't work.
And never mind.
It, it was not, I agree with you.
I'll, I'll tell you what I wanted to say.
Well, you do that.
No, you need to say what you believe your best.
And the other thing is, I don't know how the board feels about all these presentations from the schools, but, you know, I, I personally, I would much rather be invited to the school, and maybe they include that presentation with an invitation to parents and the community, and we get invited to and get to hear it there. Do I say that it's not, uh, I'm not in any way saying it's not, um...
Meaningful.
Meaningful, it's just that, it, it, it's just that, yeah, at, at the board meeting, I'd like the board meeting, me personally, be more about the kids, awards, things like we do in the meet, in the beginning, and then business. And kind of, kind of, you know, that's, that's vague, you know? Get through some of that, and see where the times go on that. All I can say is what we're doing now, to me, is broken. Even if it included eliminating our little talks, you know, I, that wouldn't bother me either. I mean, I'm just open for any kind of suggestion that, that will get us, you know, in, in, you know, I was trying to say some sort of time value, going back to what you were talking about with the, uh, the, uh, the RFP, we're, we're deciding. I wonder how you would feel if they said, we're doing twenty-minute interviews, Chris, you got twenty minutes, and you're sitting there an hour and a half later, and you're going, I don't wanna be rude to this person. You know, I think sooner or later, you'd say something. That's an overexaggeration of what I'm feeling about the board meetings. But, um, I think we're literally getting the public to tune out because of these board meetings. And, uh...
One, one thing that happened at the last board meeting is, is you started off your, your segment by, by saying, I need seven minutes, and, and thirty minutes later, you're still going. And if what you were trying to present was that important, it should've been an agenda item, because we could have had some discussion about it.
It, it expanded, it expanded because of the transfer situation and the competition, and a few things that, you know, you know, it's about, are we gonna hear about a financial update? I mean, so it, what started as two items expanded, and I definitely did go over the time. I said, I wanted to, but it expanded because of the issues, and we had, we talked for an hour.
Nobody, nobody here said anything while you were talking to expand it, so...
No, you're right, but, yeah, the original was...
Should it, should it, I'm, I'm, I'm asking you in the future...
And make it shorter for certain.
To, to, to hold it to that seven minutes, or whatever is close to that, but...
That's fine.
If, if there's something that needs to be that lengthy, it really should be an agenda item, so that we all have a chance to discuss it.
Can we say that about our reports, too?
Sure, sorry, what?
Can we say that about our reports, too?
Sure.
Can we focus on school activities?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna bring up, because that's what it's always been about. I agree with Scott, that, you know, let's, if we need to get rid of the updates or whatever. I think the updates are good, for saying that you went down to Tantera, or you went to this conference or this school, but the personal things, I think we really need to get out and, and talk about. I also like the present, I do like the presentations that the schools are giving.
They just need to stay on, they just need to stay on another timeline.
Yeah, and they, they have a problem.
They've gotten a lot short. Once they learn the system. I mean, I think Art gave them some direction, the format is pretty similar from what school to the next.
Yeah, most of them.
So we've trained the student right at that one. I don't know if there's a way to streamline it more.
I think you said in the template, I should've...
I did in the template, I said four slides and five slides.
So, I've heard, I've heard a couple of things, I've heard, um, everybody staying on time, schools staying on time, putting stuff under the consent agenda, particularly the bond issues and the obvious stuff, based on what you guys, your guys' expertise warrants, and, what was the other one? Help me out, I started writing it down.
Eliminating personal stuff from the reports.
That's what you talked about, saying on the...
And the school's presentations.
Don't, don't read the paragraphs.
Oh, and then, and then on the simple stuff, uh, editing that a little bit, and, and reacting that...
The paragraph is fine in the written form.
Right, and then just, I'm saying, take that away. Get the finer points of that. So, I mean, can we, can I make a suggestion that we move forward with those three things, and see how that, it would be great if we never had to talk about this again. But that, um, is a word with a different color to that. So there was, I'm sorry, there was, um, all of us being mindful of, of our little introductory statements, and, and the school presentations sort of staying on time, so just things that have to happen, staying on time, being quicker, um, the, uh, moving items, the appropriate items under the consent agenda, and, um, then the, what was the third one we just said?
Not reading the paragraphs.
Not reading the full paragraphs of, of the different items, but hitting the finer points, particularly on the ones that are...
Now, now in the consent agenda, could there also be some of that title and stuff around? I don't know.
Yes, 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 sir. That was all shifted because of just the growing need to, that the board began to have to go deeper, go deeper, because the budget had the eight million dollars to the budget cuts, but that can be reversed easily.
Why don't we every item?
No, I know, I'm just saying... The stuff that's a no-brainer, like, non-generative revenue, so bond issue, title, stuff that's, yeah.
You were doing a maintenance task.
Some of the items, though, it's good for the public to see or to hear, that's the presentation. You know, dump trucks, sure, probably not.
Right.
Okay, yeah. We're buying something for one of the programs that's gonna really tell us some whistles kind of thing, that, that's good for the public to see that we're, we're doing.
Sure.
That's, that's another thing.
Would it also have a consent agenda in that agenda that they hand out?
It has the items listed, A, B, C, D, and...
Yeah, but I mean, with, what the bid is or whatever, would that help them? Instead of us just saying, so it's not looking like we're rubber stamping, again, that we just say...
So what you're saying is, there are items that are currently on agendas that have a full paragraph, and they get to read, is that correct?
Right, right.
And you're saying, putting it on the consent agenda, they are no longer able to read that paragraph. So should we include that paragraph for those items?
Well, it's not a paragraph, it's just a, like, what our, what ours is.
Sixty-eight thousand dollar program.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure I wanna see all the bids out there.
No.
No, you would just say the ones, the lowest bid, of what you're doing.
What you're gonna spend makes sense. What the item is, how much you're gonna spend, but I would not wanna share all the bids with the public.
Now, that, the details can be sent to us in the...
Right, oh, yeah, we still need to see that.
Right.
I think we need to see all the bids, even if it's in the consent agenda.
And while we're, while I'm talking about that, did, did you like the format that it came in this time better than, than before?
Easier than before.
Or it's a little easier to navigate through?
Much.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Uh, one comment before, I just wanna say this, I think that we all can recognize that we can do the business at a quicker and efficient manner, if all of us really try. And I want us to remember something, that while we're up here, and sometimes getting a little carried away, you know, we're messing with all those people out there. Because they have their time, too, and they like to go home also. And so I just think that we really need to consider great courtesy.
And I think this discussion will, will help, uh, prevent situations like where we had to drop an agenda item.
And I think we can do it, that's what I'm saying.
I really, and I appreciate all your effort and your comments to, to help make that happen, and your ideas, that's a, that's a good step forward.
Throw that down.
I have a motion to adjourn, does anyone want to second that?
I'd like to add one more thing, you have, either, either of you two, just roughly, what would you say is a healthy board meeting starts itself? I have to start on time, ladies, but what's a healthy...
Nine, nine thirty.
Nine o'clock, nine thirty. That's what I was thinking.
Nine o'clock is the A go, and nine thirty is the B.
So, I'm just gonna leave to this with you two, as you go through this agenda, you know, maybe things seem to be rolled to the next agenda, or maybe, you know, my point being is, I, I'd like you both to look at it and say, hmm, boy, this, this doesn't look like nine, nine thirty to me. You know, and, and that's all.
We can definitely do that, that's for the first year.
It just seems like they're very long agendas.
First year in Newport, we were always out by nine, nine thirty, and it was just, again, greater scooping of money that got deeper. But our, the first year of all, you know, in Newport, you should remember, I was here, too, it was my first year, we were always done by nine, nine thirty, that was your one. We just started to make everything, you know, Paul and I had a discussion, make everything an item that had fewer big dollars, just so that, A, to go around the track one time and get into details, and then B, those cuts begin to come, so that was the benefit of the learning curve more than you think in the train concept of traffic.
And we've had long agendas, items like twenty-four is not, I mean, for the years, that's been a normal, but we've been able to get it down fast in time.
That's right, that's true.
And some of the reports, those, we've structured that we get reports certain months.
Right, right.
And the idea is they're scoring it over and out, and then we've kind of set up a plan, we get reports from these people in these months.
That's true.
And if we start throwing that out, and we're losing all benefit, then we get those reports from each of the different committees, so we gotta figure out a way to get through it.
And we can, and so why don't we adjourn right now?
I have a motion, I haven't had a second yet.
I've de-seconded.
Mr. Eber.
Aye.
Brown. Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Schroeder.
Aye.
Todd said. Edward, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Um, who seconded extending the meeting?
It's Scott.
Not me.
I did.
That was my point.
Uh, Scott, you're taking it, too.